Good evening. I'd like to call the May 15, 2019 Board Meeting to order and remind everyone to please use your microphones when speaking and turn them off when finished. Thank you. And my apologies that we are starting this meeting five or six minutes late. Our executive session ran over time. Commissioners present are Commissioner Sanders, Commissioner Schmidt, Commissioner Duggan, Commissioner Doan, and myself, Commissioner Bagnall. We will start with the reports by the CEO and management staff.
And I will turn it over to Dave Kraska, our Water Supply Program Director, who will present the safety minutes this evening.
Good evening, President Bagnall and Commissioners. Safety moment tonight, heat illness prevention. Seems a little strange with it raining and cold outside, but when I thought of this safety moment last week, it made a lot of sense when it was 92 degrees out on the parking lot when I left work. So what is heat illness? Well, exposure to heat can create it and it can cause illness and even death. The worst of them is a heat stroke. Other heat illnesses are exhaustion, cramps, and heat rash. Muscle cramps are often the first system of the heat illness, and we need to take precautions anytime temperatures are high and the job involves physical exertion. So there's a lot of risk factors for heat illness. There's a couple of charts here on the right-hand side, but the bulleted list is a good one. Certainly, high temperature and humidity, which is related to the heat index, direct sun, no breeze, low liquid intake, heavy physical aid or impermeable clothing. The bottom one might be the most important of them, at least in my mind. It's not being acclimated to the higher temperatures. That really matters, especially when the temperature changes quickly, and you combine these with not being acclimated, it can really cause some trouble for you. So it's important to understand the difference between heat exhaustion, which is something that you can probably take care of yourself, and heat stroke, which is more likely a medical emergency. The symptoms for heat exhaustion are heavy sweating, weakness, cold, pale, clammy skin, fast weak pulse, nausea, or vomiting. And the actions to take if you're suffering those symptoms are to move to a cooler location, cool down with loosening your clothing, applying cool wet cloths, sipping water. If you've thrown up or vomited and continue to do so, that's a medical emergency. You need to seek attention. Heat stroke, on the other hand, it has very different symptoms. High body temperature, hot, red, dry, or moist skin, rapid strong pulse, possible unconsciousness. And so if you're suffering any of those symptoms or see somebody who is, help them out, call 911. So with that, how do you prevent it? Access to water, obviously, access to shade, plan your work, work out, do the work in cooler temperatures whenever possible, monitor the weather, and acclimate yourself, and understand the symptoms and emergency response. And that concludes the safety moment for tonight.
Excellent. Thank you, Dave. I do have several additional comments this evening, and so just so you're prepared, my introductions here are going to run a little longer than usual. First, I want to start by talking about Portland Cryptosporidium results. Once again, the city of Portland has reported that samples from the Bull Run intake were positive for Cryptosporidium oocis in the past month. Oocis were detected in samples collected on April 14, 15, 21, and 29. It has concerned me that for over a year now, we've been reporting on these positive results, and they seem to have become somewhat commonplace. And so I wanted to spend just a minute and talk about why we are taking the time to make these announcements and the significance associated with that. Each time we talk about these announcements, we mention that the Portland Water Bureau and the Oregon Health Authority have determined that the public does not need to take additional It is odd and inconsistent inasmuch as Cryptosporidium is a serious organism. It can cause Cryptosporidiosis, which is a very serious illness. Symptoms include diarrhea, vomiting, fever, and stomach pain. People with healthy immune systems recover without medical treatment. That's wonderful. But according to the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, people with severely weakened immune systems are at risk for more serious disease. Symptoms may be more severe and could lead to serious life-threatening illnesses. Examples of those folks with weakened immune systems could include people with AIDS, those with inherited diseases that affect the immune system, cancer and transplant patients, and folks taking certain immunosuppressive drugs. So given the potential public health significance of the occurrence of Cryptosporidium, I asked the Portland Water Bureau why it is that the Oregon Health Authority would indicate that no further action is required. They provided a memo to me. I have attached that in your board packets. But just in summary, whenever there is a positive Cryptosporidium sample, the Portland Water Bureau notifies the Oregon Health Authority. Oregon Health Authority checks with the state and county to basically look at their disease surveillance data to see if they're seeing any increase in Cryptosporidium-related diseases reported within the community. And then the Oregon Health Authority basically looks at the disease occurrence data coupled with the occurrence levels of the positive Cryptosporidium oocis and decides if no further action is required. So there's actually a process that they go through. The good news is-
But it sort of sounds like the process is, let's see if anybody's getting sick.
Pretty much. A different characterization of that is that we are all canaries in the coal mine. Right? The good news is that to date, again, OHA and the local county health agencies have not detected any increase in Cryptosporidium-associated disease within the community. The other thing that the Water Bureau offers is that most Cryptosporidium cases are associated with human waste or domestic livestock, whereas the likely sources of crypto within the Bull Run supply are from wildlife, and those sources are generally assumed to have a lower infectivity as compared to these more domestic sources. So again, the difference between good crypto and bad crypto, apparently, and the good news is Bull Run has the good crypto. So given all of these uncertainties, the Water Bureau has basically contended that it's not possible to set a safe or acceptable threshold in terms of the occurrence levels for crypto coming from the Bull Run. So basically, what we're going to do is continue to receive this kind of information. We will share this information. Obviously, we'll have a much more active response in the event that we do get word that further action would be required. But for now, we will just continue to provide these updates and share this information. As always, Portland publishes the crypto results on their Water Bureau website, and so that information is available, and we provide links to that through our website. So that is the crypto update, and I wanted to make sure that everybody is okay with where we're going with that program. In addition, I am pleased to announce that in late April, the district was notified that we've been awarded the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting from the Government Finance Officers Association, or GFOA, for the district's comprehensive annual financial report, or CAFR. So I believe the summary nomenclature is that we got the GFOA award for the CAFR, or the CAFR Award from the GFOA. At any rate, it's a big dang deal. We're very thrilled to receive this award once again. We've been 24 years, 26, 26 years in a row that we've received this, many of them under President Bernice Bagnall.
Which is wonderful, and I congratulate the finance team as always, but you know, it's easy to think that since we've gotten it for so many years, that it's easy to get and should be a slam dunk. It's not a slam dunk, and it would be really bad to sort of suddenly stop getting it right when we're lined up for WIFIA. So.
We think it's a darn big deal, and we will be working with Andrea to be able to do additional publicizing of this award. We're also going to have a representative from GFOA present the award formally to the board, but I just wanted to give you the early heads up that this has occurred, and we think it's a darn big deal. In addition, late last month, the district provided some written comments to Senators Wyden and Merkley and Congresswoman Bonamici, expressing our support for addressing seismic vulnerability of Skoggins Dam. Again, we've attached that letter as part of your packet. We think it's important because I think some folks become confused because TBWD is not a repayment contractor with Skoggins Dam, but we think supporting this project is key, largely because the seismic stability of the dam has huge implications for the economic viability of our entire region, not only as a water source, but obviously damage to the community, and we just simply wanted to be on record as continuing to express our support. We provided a similar letter in 2014, and we were asked by Clean Water Services to essentially renew that support, and we were thrilled to do so, so we've included that. While we're on the legislative front, I wanted to take just a minute to thank you and acknowledge your good work. The district has been especially active through Andrea's team, Clark, the Special Districts Association, to express our opinions, thoughts, and positions at the state legislature. We called on you over the last month to express opposition to House Bill 3099 that would have created some vulnerabilities for special districts in the state of Oregon. I'm pleased to report that at least for now, that bill is not moving forward. So thank you very much for your efforts. I think it's a reflection of not only the outreach that you provided, but the activity that TBWD has made to be able to become more involved in the legislative process, and I would take this as a limited piece of information that says our efforts are working. So thank you. Last but not least, a branding update. We've talked to you many times about the branding update. Again, hats off to Andrea and her team in terms of the communication effort. I am pleased to report that this weekend, on May 18, we will be moving forward with the next step of applying the vinyl to all of our vehicles, and so our entire fleet will now be branded with the new TBWD logo, and hopefully that will be out on the street on Monday. So we're very excited about that, and again, also hats off to the crew that's going to be doing some work on that over the weekend so that we don't lose any downtime or efficiency associated with having the fleet out of service. So with that, I will turn it over to Dave Kraska and present the department report this evening.
Good evening again, Commissioners. So tonight's department report is actually also an item on your agenda, and it's the Willamette Water Supply System Intergovernmental Agreement, also WWSS IGA, and what the Water Supply Program is doing to get ready and prepare for its execution. I'll also note that this is a very brief kind of run-through as far as our preparation efforts for this. We'll go into greater depth and detail. We're planning to have an August work session topic on this, where I can go through each of the elements of this in greater detail as we're really spooling up for our first board meeting, which currently is scheduled for September. So the execution of the IGA is going to bring a number of changes. First, beginning from where we started, which is the project agreement that the WWSP, the Willamette Water Supply Program, has been operating. That was executed the summer of 2015, right around the same time that we hired our program manager, Stantec. And so right at that time, we were mobilizing the program, learning what the project agreement entailed, and just how we would go about making decisions. And through that, we stood up the program, and a lot of our decision-making is done through an executive committee. So a lot of the decisions land on a monthly executive committee meeting. Mark Knudsen is one of the committee members. Kevin Hanway, the water director of City of Hillsborough, is the other committee members. And so that's our operations that we've been conducting so far. So going under the IGA, we'll have a new set of operations that I'll get into here. The topics I'll be covering are some of the requirements on the managing agency, or TBWD, how the organizational structure is different from what we're currently operating on, and how we go about making decision, or decision-making under the IGA. And there's a couple of things that we're doing in order to effect a smooth transition from our current operations to the new operations, and that'll be some of our leadership onboarding that we're planning for, and also growing the culture, really, that we've currently been implementing. So the categories of managing agency responsibilities. So these are responsibilities for the managing agency, for TBWD, that are in the IGA, and they go under four categories, really. Administration, planning, finance, and asset transfers, and obligation transfers. So these are all new activities for TBWD once the IGA is executed. They all make sense, they're all fine, but we have to understand they have to land somewhere. And so one of the things I'll go into at the August work session is explain what those are, explain how they're being accommodated, and who's responsible for them. Under the organizational structure, this is Exhibit 3 from the IGA, and so it's a very, very traditional organizational structure. Where we reside is really part of the managing agency. So right here in the middle is where the Water Supply Program is going to be working in, in this managing agency portion. There will be a management committee that, right now, is our executive committee. So right now, as I mentioned, the WWSP has these monthly meetings with an executive committee. That's where most of our decisions is made. Per the IGA, the way it's structured, the management committee is actually in more of a advisory role to the managing agency, which then speaks to and receives guidance from the Board of Commissioners for the WWSS. The IGA also creates various committees that work on, in this, so far, in this particular case, we have the Operations Committee and Finance Committee. There may be future committees. And then there's also going to be the future contracts with the transmission system operator, which will be TBWD, and the water treatment plant operator, which will be the City of Regarding decision-making, as I mentioned, we have established decision-making practices under the WWSP. Under the IGA, it defines the board and the managing agency and the committee roles in decision-making. It defines $500,000 as really the contract limit that can be affected without having to come to the board. Contracts in excess of $500,000 will have to come to the board for approval, and it delegates other various functions to the managing agency, to TBWD. One of the things that we would like to consider is creating a management authority matrix for the WWSS IGA. We've been using a management authority matrix in the WWSP, the Water Supply Program, for all of our decision-makings. Basically, it clarifies repeat sort of actions, where decisions get made, when it becomes a decision that has to be elevated to, say, the executive committee or to the board, and also to various types of authorities or approvals that need to come to the TBWD Board or, say, the Hillsborough Utilities Commission. If we move forward with creating a management authority matrix for the WWSS IGA, we will probably make this one of the early approval items, early action items for the WWSS Board. So regarding leadership onboarding, there's a lot of leadership onboarding that needs to happen. As you saw in the structure of the organization, it's different from our current structure. It's a new structure, new people and new roles, but there's also a number of retirements that have occurred that we'll have to move those people onboard, basically get them up to speed to this train that's running at full speed right now. So the list of people that we're looking to onboard are certainly the WWSS Board members, WWSS committee members. As a group, we're intending to get the groups together and onboard them together. The new TBWD CEO, the new City of Hillsborough Water Director, the new City of Hillsborough Engineering Manager, and when hired, the WWSS Water Supply Manager. There's a lot of leadership transition taking place, not only because of the IGA, but just because of what's happening right now, and we just need to be prepared for it. And so we're coming up with a general approach and a plan for onboarding all of these individuals to make sure that they're up to speed and they're ready to go, again, at the speed that we're currently running the program. It's going to be customized by person or group, and we have a number of activities that we're working through in order to make this effective. Then one more thing to talk about is growing the WWSS culture. So why I stated here is to enable efficient completion of the WWSP to the mutual benefit of all parties. So what we mean by that is so far, it's working right now, and it's working, frankly, in large part due to the leadership of Mark Knudsen and the water director of the City of Hillsborough, Kevin Hanway. They've provided tremendous guidance and leadership every month, every step of the way as we've been moving the program forward, and it's been very effective. They're retiring, and so we got to keep winning. We got to keep the ball rolling, and so what we want to do is basically bake in that culture and keep it going as we bring on the new leadership and just have a seamless transition happen. And so these are kind of the four building blocks of that culture as we see it. Starts with the mission. What are you trying to accomplish? And this is our mission statement on the program, where we're building this resilient, reliable water supply by 2026. That's guiding everything that we're doing. On the left-hand side there, we have our guiding principles. So very early, when we were commissioning, mobilizing, chartering the WWSP, we came up with these guiding principles that are really the guiding, well, principles of everything that we're doing. So it's basically broadly how we're accomplishing the mission. And then the leadership charter is something that we would like to work with the WWSS Board on, and it's really what is the Board's role in affecting the mission and really enacting the guiding principles to make sure that the team is focused and meeting all of those objectives, that boiling that down into interlinked performance objectives, that the people working on the program, the people working on the program not only in my team, on the program office itself, but also broadly in the managing agency, that we're all pulling on the rope in the same direction. So a lot going on. When is this all going to happen? So this is a pretty simple timeline of what's happening. Right now, the arrow shows that we're in May, and so we're at the end of the IGA approvals. So that's quite a victory for everyone that was involved. And we're also at the end of designating WWSS Board and Committee Members. And so once we have those names, then we'll be able to start setting dates for some of these meetings and some of this onboarding with the Board members and the Finance Committee, Operations Committee meeting. We're intending to have that in July or August of this year. Until then, oh, and then, as I mentioned, the inaugural board meeting in September. Until then, we will continue to have our WWSP EC meetings to continue the process going, continue making decisions as we need to, and also continuing our managing agency transition process. So our next steps, finalize the selection of board and committee members, set the meeting's calendar, onboard the leadership, plan the inaugural board meeting, and an August work session topic. That doesn't sound so hard, does it? So we'll just, we'll just keep working on it. But with that, be glad to take any questions you have.
What's the timeline for the new hires at Hillsborough?
So my latest understanding is the, for the, so there's two key positions. So the new engineering manager is onboard. So Eric Hillema is his name, and he started late April. So he's engaged, he's drinking from the fire hose, just like any of us that first come onto this endeavor. The new water director, interviews, I believe, are at the end of this month, and so it should be, I imagine, early, I don't, so I don't, beyond that, I don't know, but I anticipate that person will be in the chair in June.
Yeah, as I understand it, first of all, I was asked to sit on the interview panel for those candidates, and so will be at the table at least. They want to make a decision, those interviews are late this month, they want to make a decision in very early June because Kevin Hanway is planning to not come back after
Okay, and thank you, Mr. Kraska.
And if there are no other questions, that concludes the CEO and management staff report this evening.
So we will turn next to Commissioner Communications and reports of meetings attended, and we will not start with Commissioner Schmidt. I think I will lead off because in stark contrast to last month, I have a whopping two meetings, so this is going to be brief and boring. I had the April 24 Budget Committee meeting, which was the second workshop for our biennial budget, and then tonight's meeting. Moving to Commissioner Doan, if you would, please.
Well, I've spent a lot of time on airplanes recently. Eleven and a half time zones one way and eleven and a half time zones the next, but I have the same two meetings that Bernice has, tonight's regular meeting and the budget meeting.
Okay. On April 24, I attended the budget workshop meeting that we had here. On the 29th, I attended the Vision Action Network's Advancing Racial Equity in Washington County event. Both Andrea Watson and I represented the district there. Very, very interesting get-together on various initiatives that governments in Washington County and, including businesses, can help prime the pump for leaders of the next generation and have representation, be more representative of our community at large, and make sure that underrepresented members of the at-large community can be represented in the future. So it was a very good evening and afternoon event. I was able to attend the Pacific Northwest AWDA conference and then tonight's meetings. Oh, one more. I attended the executive committee of the Regional Water Providers Consortium last week on the 8th. We went over a lot of updates on what things are sitting with the consortium. They are working on a shared worker agreement for all water agencies in the region so that if there is a major earthquake and an employee from one organization maybe live in another organization's service area and they just can't physically get from A to B, then they could work as a water person for the duration of the emergency and share expenses, similar to the agreements that we have with sharing equipment and other resources. So that's kind of an addendum to our ORWRAN membership, Oregon, Oregon ORWRAN. Oregon, it has to do with sharing during emergencies. Do you remember the acronym?
Oregon Water and Wastewater Agency Network.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Mark. I also got compliments from Steve Carper, our employee that went down to Salem to help testify against Senate Bill 935, which would have reduced the qualifications and training that's needed for irrigation installers. It was thought that if that requirement for licensure was eliminated, that there would be large irrigation systems going in that weren't as efficient as they otherwise would be. So that's the effort, the reason for the effort against that reduction in licensing requirement. But I think they're working through a number of issues on that particular bill, but from what we hear, it may not move forward this legislative session. We have, we got word that, or reminder that the city of Portland's contract to run and manage the consortium will end on July 1, 2020, and at some point between now and next July, the board will have to act to extend the understanding that Portland staff will continue to manage and perform all the work under the consortium rules. I think that's about it in terms of my update from that meeting. We did get a lot of word on the things that the staff has been doing. One of the major successes is 4,300 students, elementary-age students are getting educated this year on water conservation and where their water comes from. I think that's about it.
Thank you. And moving to Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes, I had a substantially shorter meeting scheduled this month. On the 29th, I attended the Willamette Intake Facility meeting and Commissioner Doan stayed as he was out of town. And on the 7th, I met with Mark about planning the agenda for this evening and tonight's regular board.
Thank you. Moving to Commissioner Sanders.
All righto. On the 24th, the Budget Committee meeting, the second meeting. On the 10th, I was able on the Friday morning to attend the Northwest AWDA conference up in Vancouver. And then on the 15th, we had the Willamette River Water Coalition meeting, our quarterly meeting, and then tonight's meeting.
Thank you. Moving to Commissioner topics. Do we have any topics that Commissioners need to raise? Hearing none. Public comment. Public comment time is set aside for persons wishing to address the board on items on the consent agenda and matters not on the agenda. Additional public comment will be invited on agenda items as they are presented. Do we have any persons who would like to comment tonight? Seeing none, I will move to the first item of business, which is to conduct a public hearing. And that public hearing is Item A, consider adopting an ordinance approving an intergovernmental agreement to form the Willamette Water Supply System Commission. First, we'll hear the staff report, and then the board will consider reading the- First, we'll hear the staff report, and then the board will consider reading the draft ordinance by title only. After that, I will open the public hearing. Anyone who wishes to offer testimony in support or opposition to this item will be given five minutes unless an extension is granted by the board. If three or more people desire to testify on the same topic, each person will be limited to three minutes. Following public testimony, I will close the hearing, and then the board will consider action on the item. The staff report tonight will be given by Clark Balfour.
Thank you, President Bagnall, commissioners. I could take a portion of Mr. Kraska's report and say ditto, and that would probably count for the staff report. On the other hand, after he talked about all of the tasks that will be forthcoming if you approve this agreement tonight, I was concerned you might run screaming into the night to get away. So hopefully that didn't happen. But we're back again, this is the second reading, and with the second reading, you would approve the Willamette Water Supply System IGA, which creates the commission that was discussed earlier. We had our first reading last month, opportunity for comment by the public. No comment was received either here at the meeting in person nor by any other method of communication. What we would ask for you tonight is that you, once again, open for public hearing, ask for questions, and then if you're ready to approve, to adopt this agreement by ordinance, at which point the agreement would become effective on July 1st, and then we would begin the process of transition from the current operation to the actual entity to be formed. I think that the staff report lays out the provisions of the agreement. We discussed this agreement in work sessions at two regular board meetings, March and April of this year, and now tonight, so I'm not going to get into the specifics of what's in the agreement, but I am here to answer any questions you might have and then assist you in the public hearing process.
Thank you for that, Clark. Do I have a motion and a second to read by title only the draft ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion passes. I'd like to invite staff to read the ordinance title into the record.
Ordinance number 02-19, an ordinance approving an intergovernmental agreement to form the Willamette Water Supply System Commission, an intergovernmental entity formed under ORS Chapter 190 between Tuolumne Valley Water District and the cities of Hillsborough and Beaverton.
Thank you. I am now opening the public hearing on Item 2A. Is there any person who wishes to comment on this ordinance? Any testimony in support or testimony in opposition? Public hearing is now closed. Do I have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance 02-19?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion passes. The consent agenda is our next item of business. Consent agenda items are considered to be routine and may be enacted in one motion without separate discussion. Any board member may request that an item be removed by motion for discussion and separate action. Any items requested to be removed from the consent agenda for separate discussion will be considered immediately after the board has approved those items which do not require separate discussion. The items on tonight's consent agenda, Item A, approve the April 17th, 2019 regular meeting minutes. Item B, appoint Commissioner Duggan as representative from the TVWD board to serve on the newly-formed Willamette Water Supply Commission. Item C, adopt Resolution 13-19, a resolution approving the Chief Executive Officer Employment Agreement and the Chief Executive Officer Transition and Relocation Agreement between Tuolumne Valley Water District and Tom Hickman, and authorizing the board president to execute the agreements. Lastly, Item D, approve the selection of Moss Adams LLP as the district's independent auditors. Do I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. We are moving here. Moving to the business agenda. On the business agenda, time will be set aside for public comment for each business agenda item. Each person is limited to five minutes unless an extension is granted by the board, and should three or more people testify on the same topic, each person will be limited to three minutes. The first item, consider adopting Resolution 14-19, a resolution reaffirming the declaration of public necessity in Resolution 36-17 to acquire permanent easements and temporary construction easements for Pipeline Section PLM 1.1 for the Willamette Water Supply System and continuation of condemnation proceedings. The staff report from Clark Balfour.
Thank you, President Bagnall, commissioners. So if we can do this, so in your packet is the staff report as well as resolution. The resolution details properties that staff has, reporting back to you on regarding the status of negotiations, that negotiations have not resulted in a transaction and the need to proceed with condemnation through the court system. Hopefully, we'll have a settlement short of that, but the fact is, we need your authorization to continue to move forward. If you recall, you adopted a resolution some time ago that authorized the condemnation proceedings but asked for this check-in point, and that's the purpose of the resolution tonight, to check in, report back to you, and then to seek your blessing to continue. What you have up on the screen and in your packet is an outline or a drawing of the easement interest to be acquired, and there are permanent easements and temporary construction easements associated with each one. The specific details of each property are attached to the resolution, but this is an overall schematic of what we need. And this segment, 1.1, is the place where we exit our currently-owned property where we have the Willamette River Water Treatment Plant, coming then north or northeasterly along what will ultimately be Kinsman Road as part of a Wilsonville Road Expansion Project. And then from there, the pipeline will continue up through Wilsonville and on to the treatment plant. This depiction shows how we lay out on the particular properties. It was based on consideration of various things. Number one, a desired location for our pipeline because of our existing pipeline that already comes out of the treatment plant. Second, its proximity to the road system, even though that road system will be expanded. Third, the city of Wilsonville has a road project to expand the road, and this was a desired location from their point of view. Fourth, we did our own alternatives analysis and determined that this was the best routing to achieve the purposes of the district and the program in terms of being able to safely and soundly and in a diligent fashion locate a pipeline that would meet our program requirements and essentially result in that public benefit that we're seeking to provide for our citizens. And secondly, it's also located in a way that causes what we think is the least private injury or minimizes that injury to the property owner in terms of being near the anticipated roadway, being on the edge of the property. So with that, we would ask for your reaffirmation of ordinance or Resolution 36-17 by adoption of this resolution, and I've already forgotten the number on it, so 14-19, thank you. Questions?
Right next to the right-hand corner there, there's that strip that's white clear through the red and the green.
Yes, and you're talking about where there's the break?
Yes.
Yeah, so, interesting thing about condemnation, you have your power of condemnation against private property interests, but where there's a publicly-owned piece of property, you have to negotiate with that public owner. That strip is owned by the city of Wilsonville, and so that is a separate process going forward.
I would like to assure however many people may be watching this telecast that this board does not enter lightly into any kind of condemnation proceeding and that every effort will be made by staff to negotiate fair settlements with all of those property owners who are affected. Having said that, do I have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 14-19, a resolution reaffirming the declaration of public necessity in Resolution 36-17 to acquire permanent easements and temporary construction easements for Pipeline Section PLM 1.1 for the Willamette Water Supply System and continuation of condemnation proceedings?
I move?
I'll second.
Thank you. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion passes. Moving to Item B on the business agenda, consider adopting Resolution 15-19, a resolution approving the district's 2019-20 financial plan, and we'll have a staff report by CFO Paul Matthews.
Good evening, President Bagnall, commissioners. First, I want to apologize for the BPEs, that's a board packet of enormous size, have we dropped on you? It's a new record. This has been a long time coming, developing the district's financial plan. We've had a financial plan forever, but this will be published in such a way that we can share it with many stakeholders. As we develop the financial policies, we actually carved out a space in there, our financial management policies, for the financial plan adoption. So let's walk through this. Tonight, we're going to give you a brief introduction on how our financial plan is created and our financial management process. Talk a little bit about the audience and the purpose for the financial plan document itself, give you a quick overview of it, and we'll talk a little bit about the proposed financial plan. These are things that we've shared with you in the past, the numbers really haven't changed much, but still want to share a little bit with you on that, and then talk about the next steps. So, we like to, of course, bring it back to our financial management process that we have here at the district, and we've talked about that as well. We have the four quadrants of the financial plan is obviously a key part of that. The other components of the financial management process are shown in this graphic illustration here. When we look at the financial plan itself, what we're really trying to do is to forecast out based on the master plan, based on customer forecasts, our operational plans, all those components together, what the cash flow requirements are of the district. And that provides staff guidance so we can do things like, for example, set up a financing, look at WIFIA, as well as do the rate process itself. So that's kind of where we all, it comes back to that financial management process, and we've talked about this with you all before too. It's a circular process and a continuous process. This is a very important component of it, however. So the audience that we have and the purpose of the financial plan, first of all, in terms of purpose, one of the important aspects of financial plan is it allows us to focus on the strategic nature, really encourages us to look at the strategic nature of our finances. By looking out over 30 years, providing a written record over time provides that accountability so we can actually look back, and this is what we were attempting to do, and these are the things that we've actually accomplished. So I think it's important that we do this and provide a written document to it. It also provides really important information to some of our stakeholders, and our stakeholders will talk a little bit about them when we talk about the audience, but it's more than what we might think. It is, for example, neighboring jurisdictions that rely on TVWD as a leader in the water business, they would be one of our stakeholders. And I would say probably the most important is it demonstrates the district's commitment to sound financial management. I think I've talked about this with you before, we want to lay a narrative of the district's financial management, so when we go out and borrow money, which will be critical for the success of financing the Willamette Water Supply Program, we can show that commitment over time, and this is just another component in there to demonstrate that in a very clear way. So we have internal stakeholders here at the district, everybody in this room, as well as other groups within the district. The finance community, including investment bankers, are very interested in these components, as well as rating agencies and other audience for this. As we build that narrative, we want to demonstrate to the rating agencies that we have a plan and that we're executing against the plan. And the last one that I have listed here is the WIFIA program team itself. So we've provided them a draft of this, and of course, they're going to be very interested in seeing this as we go forward, and so that will be one of the things that we provide to them as soon as it's adopted. I talked about the financial management policies, and you took action on the financial management policies back in March to adopt those. In the financial management policies, it actually requires that the board approve the request of financial plan. We went around and around on approval, acceptance, adoption, and we thought approval, when we met with the finance committee, the board's finance committee, fit best. This is the board saying, this is the plan that we approve of, it is not the rate process. There will be a separate process that the board goes through to set the water rates. They'll be consistent with the financial plan, but that will be a separate process that the board undertakes. And the board isn't just merely accepting the work that staff provides, but is actually approving and providing guidance through the financial plan. So the document itself, other than the fact that it's kind of a heavy document and responsible for that board package of enormous size, we plan to evolve this over time, but as it stands right now, we have seven primary sections, an introduction, of course, everything needs to have one of those. We talked about the financial management objectives and policies, we have water sales projections in there, because that's an important part of both the revenue side as well as the cost side. Our capital improvements plan, we discussed that as well as attached to the report, the capital projects. The financial, the capital financing plan, which is actually how we talk about raising the revenue that's needed, the financial forecast, which lays out what the future performance will be, as well as our funds and reserves. There are appendices that we've attached as well. We want this, at this point, to be a package we can deliver to the finance community, and they'll have the full meal deal all in their hands. It's especially important over the next few years, maybe less important when we can actually send links to the other documents in the future. The financial management policies are in there, that actually, again, demonstrates the board's commitment to strong financial management, we want that to be front and center in our financial plan. The capital improvements plan, which is essentially that component of the budget that shows each of the capital projects, the cost, and really provides a lot of detail on that that's important as well. Copy of the bond ordinance, that is a very important document the board adopted last month that allows us, authorizes us to actually enter debt. The draft master revenue bond declaration, as well as summary tables from the financial forecast itself, and of course, we wanted to have a map of the district, so we included that in there. The expenditure plan that we have, this is a 10-year expenditure plan, this lays out the spending that we have in the finance plan, we break it down by our operating O&amp;M cost, purchase water, we break out separately because that changes over time. You can actually see when we move from the Portland system to the Willamette, that the purchase water cost actually goes down. Importantly, we show the capital outlays, the impact that we have by building reserves over time, and then debt service as we finance and pay off the debt associated with the water supply program. For those that like to see things in a graphic form, this is the same information but presented as a stacked bar graph, and you can really tell from this that we're heading into a period of high capital outlays when the water supply program is really kicking in, we're completing a lot of that capital program. What you see here in the blue areas, the capital outlays, most of that is, again, in this period of time, for the Willamette Water Supply System. We look at the capital funding plan itself, here it's broken down by component, and we have a very little narrow slice here I want to point out, we had a conversation by email on that last night. This is for the Joint Water Commission, it's a very small slice, it's that kind of green color. The in-district CIP you see here is this area, and here is the water supply program, that blue area. What you see in the bars are actually the borrowings that we have, so we're projecting using WIFIA borrowing to fund much of the program, as well as some traditional revenue bonds. The timing of those things, as we've talked about before, will vary depending on market interest rates and some other things. Just a quick insight on the WIFIA, a quick update, look this morning, if we were, just happened to close today, it would have been at 2.81% interest. So we are going as quickly as we can towards closing, and currently, the plan, you know, we have to work with our EPA partners on this, but we're targeting July for closing on the WIFIA loan, so that's pretty exciting for us, hence needing to get a lot of this work done in advance. The financial management policies talk about the financial plan itself having a lot of key assumptions in there, and in fact, you might recall that there's an appendix A to the financial management policies that I'm to update based on your approval of this financial plan. So we've laid out some of the key things here that will be part of that. The first will be the debt funding of no more than $600 million, that is consistent with the ordinance 0119 that you passed the last- That is consistent with the ordinance 0119 that you passed last month. We have other various technical assumptions in here. I didn't intend to go through all these assumptions because frankly, they're kind of technical and finance in nature. Maybe one of the important ones I will highlight is the minimum cash balances. We're targeting keeping 250 days of our forecast O&amp;M cost on hand. Couple reasons for doing that. One, it's a sound business practice. The second one is that it's going to help us with our credit rating with the credit rating agencies that like to see that. We're targeting a little bit higher because of some other issues with the district, our size, and some of the other complexities of our financing. We think, based on advice we've gotten from our municipal advisor, that that's going to be helpful in securing a good credit rating. Interest rates, I just mentioned that right now, if we were to have closed today, the interest rate on the WIFIA loan would be 2.81%. We're maintaining our assumption at 3.5%. Last year at this time, it was like 3.35%, I can't recall just off the top of my head, but it's, interest rates have come down quite a bit in the last year. What comes down can go up, and so we have these assumptions in the plan. I'd rather be greeted by good news in that front than the not-so-good news. One of the other important aspects of this is the purchased water, and we've presented this kind of information before. What you see on the left hand, two pie charts, what you see on the left hand is the volume of water that we buy from our sources. On the left hand, you see actually the cost, and you can see why we tend to try to exercise as much as we can out of the joint water commission because the cost of that tends to be somewhat lower. As we migrate from the Portland supply on to the Willamette supply, that will change somewhat. Presented here is our forecast of water, and we need this not only to forecast our revenues, but also to forecast our costs. So you see, we step off the Portland system in 2026, and considering our assumptions right now, and the fact that GWC can deliver water at gravity, it'll be cheaper. We show using more of the GWC water and topping off with Willamette water and growing into that supply over time. Impacts on our customers, this is obviously an important element of our analysis. Couple things, we've turned this graph around from what you've seen before. What you see now, the bars, we typically show the rate increases of the bars. We're showing that as the typical bill. Made more sense to show that as a typical bill. So these are the typical bills going up over time using the axis on the left-hand side. The red line that you see here is our forecast of rate increases or percentage change in rate revenues, and that's based on this axis, which we're able to keep just below 4% is our assumption. One of the things that we try to do, keep it at 4%, is to levelize those rates to the extent we can, so we can avoid those unintended large spikes in rates, and that's consistent with the board's financial management policies to do that. Obviously, we need to use combination factors to do that, and we levelize those rates by using the debt. The costs are coming up and going down, but we use debt and other factors, including the use of reserves, to level those rate increases over time to provide less volatility for our customers. What we present here is changes in our reserve balances. We've been saving money for the water supply program. We anticipate that those balances will decline. Financial plan assumes that, and then we will, of course, see some growth over time as we finish the water supply program, and we will actually start to have a debt service reserve. We're anticipating having a debt service reserve to fund, as provided for some of the traditional revenue bonds that we're anticipating issuing. There's no guarantee that we'll be required to have a debt service reserve. We'll look at market conditions at the time. If there's no requirement, if it's not going to provide us a lower interest rate, we may forego that because there are some costs to the district for having a debt service reserve. That's how we levelize those rates over time. That's how we keep that rate increase at below the 4% level. The document itself, we want to evolve this over time. We have ambitious plans, but we need to do it in steps. Couple things we want to do is to add a section of an operational plan where we talk more about how we're going to operate the utility, how we incorporate the purchased water and some of the other operating concepts that are in there. Chief Engineer Pack and I have talked about having a separate capital improvements plan. That's something that we think would be valuable, and then the last thing we want to do is incorporate history. I talked about how accountability is part of this by showing what we have projected in the past and the performance that we've achieved in the future. That's something that we want to add as well. So our next step, I will update appendix A, the financial management policies, based on your approval of this document. We will separately, outside of this process, we will be entering in a process to do the two-year rate update, so we'll be doing that and bringing that to you at a future work session. We will be applying for two credit ratings. We need two credit ratings for the WIFIA program, and so we will be doing that, working on that directly. We'll close the WIFIA loan, as I said. The goal is to do that in July. Even though we don't need the money right now, we want to lock in as soon as we possibly can. One other thing I want to talk about is, as the district really is moving in a new direction by adding this debt, and we're going to have to make some changes in how we do business, one of the things that we want to talk about is financial disclosure and some of the training that we need to have on the financial disclosure front. CEO Newson attended a session at the SDAO conference this spring, and I think maybe some of our board members were at that session, not sure, but there is need for us to be very specific in how we convey to the market when we have outstanding debt what our financial condition is, and we're going to have to make sure that we do that in a measured way. So we'll bring that forward as well. And then the next, the last step we have there is issuing future revenue bond after the WIFIA is done. So with that, answer any questions that you might have?
Well, I'd just like to say that even though it did result in a board packet of enormous size, I was clicking through the financial plan and reading it and reading it and reading it and reading it and thinking, oh, my goodness, will this never end? And every time I thought that, suddenly, there would be a graph or a table that was like, oh, I didn't know that. So there was a lot of good stuff in there and a lot of work, obviously. Questions from any?
Paul, in the packet we had last month, the rate increase projected was 4.2%, and now it's 4. Do we expect it to stabilize at 4?
4.2%?
Yes.
Well, I thought it was a little different than that, but what this reflects is the latest information that we have on from the requested budget. So prior to that, back when we talked about this in March, we didn't have the requested budget, so we've taken the requested budget. You might remember that in March, we, actually starting in, at the work session on January 29th, Chief Engineer Pack and I, we talked about the scenarios that we would have in terms of the capital program and got guidance from the board. We used that then to develop the CIP and to develop the requested budget, so this reflects those assumptions.
Okay, so this is more current information than the old information?
That's correct.
I'm just elated. Couldn't be 3.99, could it?
No, it's about 3.90, but I must admit that there's, we need to be prepared for this. We can show more significant decimal points than we actually have, and so these numbers are going to move around from year to year, just based on, for example, if we have a very long watering season, maybe it's dry in May. It's been dry this May. We might have a lot more Block II revenue coming in June, July, and into August. That may change these numbers somewhat, and so the underlying variability that we have actually is significant, and so I hesitate for people to grab a number and say that's where we're going to be, but we want to reset the trend each year when we find out where we are so we can avoid those sudden unexpected spikes for our customers. The big event has been getting the WIFIA money. That has really saved us, given us a lot of flexibility in financing, and that really has been what's brought down our rate increases. So again, another reason that we're focused on getting that work done.
Thank you and good work.
Thank you. With that, we do have a recommendation that staff recommends the board adopt Resolution 1519 approving the district's 2019-20 financial plan.
So do I have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 1419? Oops, wrong one. Sorry. Yes, do I have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 1519, a resolution approving the district's 2019-20 financial plan?
So moved.
Second?
Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 The motion passes. And the next item is to consider adopting Resolution 16-19, a resolution approving the draft master revenue bond declaration, and Paul Matthews will do that.
Evening again, President Bagnall, Commissioners. Another step in the process here is to have the approval of our draft master revenue bond declaration. Give you a quick update on where we are here on the debt process in general. Back in March, we had our first reading of the bond ordinance, ordinance 0119. It was adopted in April. There's a 30-day period for that to become effective. It'll become effective on the 17th, which I believe is Friday, so that will be effective on Friday. We need that in place so that we can enter into the WIFIA loan, so we're moving forward on that. At this meeting, we're asking that you approve the revenue bond declaration, which will actually be the document that we're negotiating with the EPA that will secure their debt, and I'll talk a little bit more about that. And then, of course, we're trying to close in July, maybe August, on the WIFIA debt itself. The purpose of the master declaration, it has several purposes. First, it defines various terms that are within the agreement that we have with future bondholders. It establishes covenants, promises that the district makes for rates, that you will, that the board will set rates, it'll generate enough money to pay back to bondholders and a little bit more to make sure the system operates and is in good physical condition. It also has a covenant for what's called an additional bonds test, which we may want to issue debt in the future. In fact, we have plans to issue multiple series of debt. We need to have a way of issuing that debt in the future and protecting the then-existing bondholders, and that's called an additional bonds test. That's included in there. It establishes the flow of funds and who gets paid when in the event that there is a shortfall. The bondholders want to make sure that there's a clear line of when they get paid and that folks can't jump in front of them, that they don't otherwise expect to be there. It provides a basis for our pledge to the bondholders. It is essentially the indenture, the promise that we have to them. It's actually executed by staff, so we're asking for your approval, but the final document, based on ordinance 0119, as well as the recommendations we have from our bond council, is executed by staff. We're asking for approval here to lay out the terms and conditions so that you can see what it is. Of course, we'll operate within that, but we need to have the flexibility to address market conditions that might arise, and we need to have the ability to, for example, work with the WIFIA program to make sure that their specific needs are addressed. So the process of developing, it's authorized again by the bond ordinance, ordinance 0119. Our bond council municipal advisor worked with district staff to prepare the master declaration. It shouldn't surprise anybody that this looks a lot like the master declarations that our bond council uses for many of their clients. There's kind of an industry standard way, and we had to make some deviations from that. In fact, we had some opportunities because we don't have existing debt to optimize, for example, the additional bonds test around what we're doing with the WIFIA program, but other than that, it's a pretty standard document. We brought that to the board finance committee, and we reviewed it with the finance committee, and they gave us comments and looked as well. We've shared it with the WIFIA program team, and the WIFIA program has actually hired their own legal counsel that has reviewed this and used it as a basis for the WIFIA loan agreement, drafting the WIFIA loan agreement to be consistent with that, with the master declaration. Our bond council will review the WIFIA loan agreement, and that may require some technical modifications to the final master declaration that we'll be executing. So with that, answering any questions that you might have, and then we will have a recommendation as well.
Are there questions from the board? Okay, we've been over this a number of times, and we appreciate your thoroughness on it. Do I have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 16-19, a resolution approving the draft master revenue bond declaration?
So moved.
I'll second.
Thank you. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion passes, and with that, there being no further business before the Board of Commissioners, this meeting is adjourned.